You just have to put mine.
They want to move on.
You probably need me to, you know, have a saying like I need, oh, somebody just mirroring, like just sit down next to me. Yeah, that's how I usually am, but I didn't get to do it last year. I think we did work on it last year, but it was like, there was some time where I usually clean up, but I couldn't, you know, clean up. And I had to keep going, and now I'm like, I have like an extra stack.
I guess I just have one of those.
Filing this from, you know, like I skipped a period, you know what I mean?
It's a year, I believe.
I'd love to just get that all caught up. But December's on my schedule?
Okay. Great. Also, so you know, we were told earlier, we heard all the mics are on all the time.
Hmm.
Okay. We have a large audience today. I'd just like to mention to everyone in the audience as well as all commissioners and staff to please silence your cell phones. This is the time to take out your cellphone, put it on silent, and then put it back. Thank you. All right. Everybody in place? Okay. It's 3:30 PM on November the 7th, 2024. This regular session of the Caddo Parish Commission is now in order. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Crackman.
Here.
Commissioner Greg Young. Commissioner Thomas. And Commissioner John Paul Young.
Here.
Commissioner Burrell.
Here.
Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Gage Watts.
Present.
Commissioner Blake.
Here.
Commissioner Atkins.
Here.
Commissioner Cothran.
Here.
Commissioner Lazarus.
Here.
And Commissioner Epperson.
Present.
Okay. And for the record, Commissioner Thomas is present, just not at his desk right now. And that does give you 11 of 12 members present, and that is a quorum.
Okay. Today, we'll have our invocation. I haven't checked in advance. I would like to ask Commissioner Greg Young to do an invocation for us. Would you do that, Commissioner? And then our Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Epperson?
Lord, we thank you today for another day to come before you, to serve you and to serve your people. God lead and guide us to all truth and all thanksgiving and all praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let's all face the flag. I would ask that all active military and all veterans render the standard hand to browse salute. All others, right hand across your heart. And as we repeat the Pledge of Allegiance in unison, let's remember our POWs and our MIA's.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, Commissioners Greg Young and Epperson. That brings us to Agenda Additions. We have one Agenda Addition on the agenda today. It is a special resolution of remembrance for our friend and former colleague, Commissioner Todd Hopkins, who passed away this week. The chair moves to add this to the agenda. All right. Oh, what's not working? Are the pad, are these not paths working today? Okay. So it's been moved to add this to the agenda. Now we'll have a public hearing. If anyone is in favor or against adding this item to the agenda and wishes to speak about it, please come forward. Now, the public hearing is open.
John Glover. I'm in favor of this addition. Todd was such an instrumental part of our community. He provided such service that none of us can say that it was not within his power to do what he could for all of us. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. I know he would appreciate those comments. Okay. That appears to be everyone. Public hearing is closed. All right. Before we vote, I'll just say for the discussion of, well, let's just vote on this, and then we can discuss it when it comes up on our agenda. So it must be unanimous to pass. I'm sure it will be.
Commissioner Greg Young and Commissioner Burrell. Thank you. And that motion advances.
Okay. What will be number of that item?
That will be added under your Section 8 as 8.5.
All right, 8.5. Okay. Now we have citizens' comments.
Brings us to citizens' comments, yes. And we have submitted the comment cards that we've received up to this point.
All right. Our first comment is from Ms. John Glover, who just commented a moment ago. Welcome, Ms. Glover.
Thank you. John Glover, 9100 Walker Road, Apartment 217, Shreveport, 71118. I rise to speak to Agenda Item 20.1. It is the agenda item that speaks to the lighthouse, establishing the criteria for the lighthouse over at Galilee. On Monday, because clarity was not given prior to the meeting, I asked for an explanation. Having to leave in the midst of, I did not get that explanation, but did indeed get the explanation of what was being done. I still have a concern about the issue, though. With the issue, based on conversation that you all had on Monday, not meeting the requirement for the approval of the allocation via federal guidelines, I'm trying to figure out why would you all even be considering it. Yes, it is a good endeavor, but we must do things, as you just said, decently and in order. And if the criteria or the guidelines are there, and this does not meet them to the letter of the law, then there should not be any attention given to this. I do understand that the findings have to be expended by, well, not expended, but allocated by the end of this year, but spent by next year. Well, if you don't meet that criteria, then that is to me a waste of effort and time. There has not been any reason particularly of what the requirement is that has not been met. We, the citizens, need to know what that is. We do. We already have two lighthouses in Shreveport. One that's operable, Morning Star Church, and one that is getting into operations, the Highland. Now, have we even heard, even from Morning Star, how successful that effort has been? We don't know anything, but we do know that you all are addressing Item 20.1. But I'd like to have clarity within my heart why it is that such will be considered if indeed there is not that you meet the criteria. There was the term mitigate that was used on Monday. And I guess that means that you're going to, you're going to structure this legislation to meet the requirements, but you're mitigating, will it fall within the guise of legality? And that's what we need to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. Our next comment is from Mr. Tom Dozent.
Mine short. Dr. Martha Lutha King Drive, intersection of Roy Road, is in horrible condition near Southern University, on the backside of KCS due to the bus and heavy equipment traffic. If someone can look into that, I mean, you're about to fall off on the side of the road or in the ditch. It's really bad off.
Thank you. Could you repeat the address? Roy Road and MLK Drive? Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Walker, I don't know if that is in the parish or in the city, but if it's in the city, could you call it to the city's attention? And if it's to the parish?
I believe it is in the city. We will look into it. And if it's in the parish, we'll address it. If it's in the city, we'll discuss that with the city.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Our next comment is from Madison Poche. Welcome, Ms. Poche.
I have a few speakers that would like to speak alongside me. That's okay? We do have slides if anyone wants to look at pictures, but we don't have to run them. I'll have them here. I guess we can follow along. Okay.
Could you restart the clock, please? Mr. Clerk? Thank you.
And while we're doing that, just to let the presenters know, during public comments, we don't allow presentations, but they did forward a presentation earlier that has been distributed to the commissioners. So they have received a copy of that presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Great.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Madison Poche. I'm with the Highland Center. We are a member of North Louisiana Interfaith, and the Highland Center is also one of the neighborhood-based disaster response hubs that's already been working in partnership with Caddo Parish through this project that we call Community Lighthouses. We're here today because Galilee Missionary Baptist Church had been approved to receive the $500,000 in ARPA funds towards a project to benefit Allendale citizens. I think as we are well aware, the guidelines have evolved, and now this really celebrated congregation has requested to reallocate funds for a shovel-ready project that fits their same vision. And recently, the ARPA Committee has recommended repurposing these Galilee funds to create the Allendale Community Lighthouse project, which would also allow any residual or rebate funds to rollover into creating another lighthouse project, also in Caddo Parish, with power and water backup.
Alvin Mays, 6332 Borderline, Shreveport, Louisiana. I'm excited to share that if allocated today, the $500,000 that's committed to building two community lighthouses, one to serve the Allendale neighborhood, which will be constructed at the community lighthouse at the Galilee Baptist Church, and then the second, the MLK neighborhood, which will be constructed at the Willows Shoot Baptist Church. One of the issues that comes up repeatedly in our community is that of disaster-related power outages. And as you can see from the headlines that you perhaps have in front of you, it is not trees falling on homes or high winds that's the leading cause of death in natural disasters. It's long-range power outages. The next time we see headlines like this, we want to be ready with a plan. We want to be able to respond effectively. And today, we want to show you a strategy to create a way for us to plan ahead for a disaster. These disasters have both human cost and an economic cost, and this strategy will help to minimize the effects of these crises. In this map, each red dot illustrates a death caused by outages. This is the human cost that we see without a plan in place. This strategy began with our sister organization in New Orleans after Hurricane Idaho. Churches and organizations found themselves unable to adequately address the needs of their community without power. We have different disasters up here. Fewer hurricanes, but more tornadoes and ice storms. But our goal is the same, the capacity to care for one another during a power or water outage. As you can see, for those of you who have the slides in front of you, the eventual plan is for a network of resilient hubs at 20 congregations and community institutions throughout the parish, each with its own commercial-scale solar power battery capacity and emergency water supply.
Mr. Clerk.
Fifteen of those would be within the city limits and five in the outlined rural areas. During outages, these institutions would immediately begin assessing needs and providing assistance in their neighborhoods. I'd also like to take a moment to thank the Caddo Parish Administration for doing such a thorough job, making sure that we do what we are supposed to do with these funds. Our finance director has done the books for our work here and in New Orleans, and she was blown away by the requirements here in Caddo. Commissioners, you can feel sure that your administration is keeping a very close eye on the money. So I want to thank you all for helping us build one right here at Morning Star, and that is complete and active. So the addition of this lighthouse is part of the largest network of microgears in the U.S. Ms. Poche?
Okay. Before we continue, I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules. And if I can get a second, I'll say why. Second. Okay. There are several commissioners who wish to ask questions on this topic, and there are several people here who wanted to be present when the vote took place, so that those questions could be answered in a timely way. So I'm going to suggest that we move this item, which is 20.1, up for consideration now, along with a resolution from Commissioner Gage Watts. Is that right, Commissioner? Commissioner Gage Watts also wants to move up the 8.2 special resolution for Kelsey Samuel, our own Kelsey Samuel. So if we could have a vote on that, unless there's further discussion on this suspension of the rules motion. Okay, let's vote. Commissioner Atkins?
I will vote in support of this. I just request that my colleagues remember that we're all being courteous today, and hopefully that they will return that courtesy in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. And I also urge all of our discussion to be extremely courteous and friendly, even if we disagree about any particular thing. Yes, Commissioner Crackman?
So we're moving an ordinance or a resolution in front of special recognition, correct? We're changing the order of the agenda?
So we're, the suspension of the rules will be to take two items out of order. One.
Do them first.
And do them first, yes. And then we'll go back into regular order after that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Crackman. And that way, we'll also be able to converse with these people. Let's vote.
Bear with us just one moment. You should be able to vote now. Commissioners Crackman, Burrell, and Cothran, it is not registered your votes yet. Thank you. And that motion passes with 11 in support, none in opposition, and one absent.
Okay. So now, the people who are going to talk about community lighthouse, let's take that one first. You can talk about community lighthouse as you were going to if you were making a public comment, but you'll have a different time allotment. I'm not sure what it is. And also, we'll be able to ask questions of you. Yeah, I think it's 15 total minutes for your position. But I don't, I'm sure you won't do that much time. Up two, yes. 15 total potential minutes. Okay, please continue. Ms. Poche, are you leading the discussion from your side?
Yep. We have a few other comments, if that's okay? So just to pick back up again, with this funding allocation, we have been working very hard to make sure that we can both fulfill this request for the Allendale neighborhood and make sure that we are gathering the resources to make a second location. So this would be sites three and four in Caddo Parish with funding that could be available today. And I think we have talked about this quite a bit, but I'll just reiterate that the project is to have commercial-scale solar panel and backup battery systems. They work year-round. When the power goes out, the backup batteries instantly provide power. And then because the system is monitored remotely and replenished by the sun, it provides power indefinitely. So on regular days when the sun is shining, the cost savings allow for the long-term maintenance insurance and insurance for the project, as well as allows the institution some resources for community outreach and community response. And then a critical part of this is workforce development. So we have committed to having apprenticeship labor on every community lighthouse build. We've already engaged our electrician and plumbing unions. I think we have some representatives from them today. We have some photos, if we can forward, of our citizens learning about this modern technology on the first site constructed here in Caddo Parish. Yeah, thanks. And then I wanted to add that since really we last, I last presented here, we have been working really closely with our partners in Caddo Parish, including Mr. Walker and the Caddo Parish Sheriff's Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Response. I mean, I think I texted with Tony LeBlanc on Monday. And then with, within days after the first funds were approved, our first two community sites did open immediately in response to a major power outage as overnight shelters and worked hand-in-hand with the parish to save lives. So now the Moore Town Community Lighthouse has its backup power system operating. The funding has been released for the second site, and we're working on that now. And then we are also having really exciting conversations with our counterparts in Bossier City. Those two sites in Bossier have been identified, and we are making steady progress.
Okay. Hi, I'm Kitty Batterton, Director of Operations for North Louisiana Interfaith. And I want to bring you back to the June outage. So, well, the rules have been suspended, so you can answer, but you can simply raise your hand. Commissioners, if you could raise your hand if during the June outage?
Usually we ask, and then, I'm just, go ahead.
Well, I'm a teacher, so I'm flipping the script a little bit. But if you could raise your hand if during the June outage, you personally got calls from your constituents, or you and your loved ones had to actively get out into your community to help the situations of your community. Thank you. So two weeks after I started working with North Louisiana Interfaith was when we won the vote here at the Caddo Commission to fund the first two lighthouses, of which one is active today. So thank you for that. But eight days after that, we went into a 10-day power outage in the sweltering heat. I am from South Louisiana, but I was not prepared for that at all. Power cut out on that Friday in the middle of the night, and on Sunday night, our leaders met, and we decided that we would text-blast a survey to 100,000 people in Caddo and Bossier to assess how bad the situation was. Within 24 hours, 5,000 people had already filled out the survey, and honestly, the responses were pretty intense. So we began sorting through all the responses that we could, and those that indicated they were in most need. And of course, people who indicated that they had a medical device were bumped to the top of the list. But we also needed to pay attention to the comments that people wrote. And in all of this chaos, it became my job to read all 5,000 comments, and it was the most heartbreaking thing I've ever done. You'll see the comments on your slide, three of them that were chosen, placed in as an example of a few of what we encountered. So we quickly shared the results of the survey with Dr. Martha White, with LDH, Homeland Security, the parish, and the city. Then we began calling the people that were in the worst situations, and it became clear that we needed visits. So on that Tuesday, we began delivering ice and water and food to people's homes. Erica Bryant, parish administrator, coordinated semi-trucks of ice and water, and Robert Jump with Homeland Security provided the pallets of water. The Red Cross jumped in at a moment's notice and provided food. We set up the command center at Galilee, and we recruited 25 volunteers that were willing to do a super-short training, load up their cars, and visit the homes. It was a very effective strategy, and we reached hundreds of people in their houses. And we're really proud of that. But it was evident that we don't ever want to take a reactive approach with people's lives at stake again, and that a proactive approach was best. So I got to see a proactive approach in action in New Orleans with our sister organization Together New Orleans. And it was when Hurricane Francine hit, and it made landfall as a Category 2 on September 12th, and there were hundreds of people without power. So the day before Francine hit, I was able to join our staff and nine community lighthouse teams on a Zoom call to prepare. This time, we were able to send neighborhood-specific texts from the point person at each lighthouse. That's why it's so vital that each lighthouse is located in neighborhood center. For some, I'm sorry, the, this time, we sent the neighborhood-specific texts, and then for some seniors who were abandoned by staff at an elderly care facility, many unable to move to relocate to a lighthouse, the teams began bringing battery packs, ice, and water. And the proactive work and actions of the lighthouse keepers made a world of difference for the people of New Orleans. TNO was in constant coordination with the city and Homeland Security, and their work has better positioned the city to start a mapping process to identify all senior living facilities and create a plan for each one across New Orleans. This is our goal, to work in intense collaboration with the parish and the city for the well-being of our communities. Thank you.
So as you're going through, since we said we would be able to ask you questions, I'll just ask Commissioner Crackman, who's on the board. Commissioner, do you have a question you'd like to ask at this time?
No, I was going to make an announcement.
Okay. Okay, great. Please, please continue.
Chairman Young? I put my name on a separate sheet, but I will come up since it's being addressed now. There was a question about the lighthouse at Morning Star. I am a member of Morning Star. On September the 29th, which was a Sunday following our church anniversary, Morning Star members, with a collaboration of many Interfaith followers, we hit the streets of Moore Town. My street was Peyton Street. We went down three to four blocks to each home. We asked the questions. They were on the questionnaire, and we then came back and reported. Every house that we visited had an individual there. They were in favor of this. They were in favor of being contacted when the lights were out, when there was no battery power, when their phones ran out, when you had elderly people sitting in a house, and that their workers couldn't get to them because they didn't have electricity or water and other things that they needed for themselves, so they were sitting alone. Everyone we talked to was in favor of this. So I just wanted to speak up for Morning Star and also for Willows Shoot, which is in my community, because people were at our office, at our CDC office, when our lights came back on. We set up a temporary shelter in that building to help people who needed CPAP machines to run. So this is vital when people don't have energy. Thank you.
Thank you.
That couldn't be a more perfect segue to my part. My name is David McCarter, and I'm with Community Renewal International. And I think it's important for me to let you guys know that neither me personally nor Community Renewal has a financial stake in this project. We're not a recipient of any funding of this of any kind. I'm just here to speak on the validity of the project and kind of the uniqueness of the project that I see personally makes a great fit for Community Renewal and for our community. So the thing for me is, while this is a great physical tool to have in our community and a great place for people to come, we all know that, you know, that's very episodic and kind of random when these things happen. So the important thing for me, and the unique aspect of this project, is the social infrastructure that gets built through this project, because there's a commitment to each of these congregations to go build relationships with the neighbors that surround the church. And it's an outreach to get to know all of the people in the community, not just one time, not just to introduce the project, but to build that sustainable relationship. And in building these relationships, one of the things that you get to know are the assets and the needs of the community. And in times of crisis, those are the two things that you got to have. And by building the relational network in the community, you also get yourself in a position where the exchange of information in times when information is very difficult to transfer, the foundation is in place for that information to be exchanged in a timely fashion to get the people what they need, where they need, and how they need it. So, you know, it just, it's so impactful for me to see these congregations reach out and gather these needs, because like the lady was referring to in Morning Star in Moore Town, we now have a list of people who have critical needs, who we can proactively reach out to when the power goes out. And we don't have to wait and hope that somebody finds them or hope that they can reach out. We can make the phone call and get them to where they need to be in a timely fashion. So this relational foundation and the social impact is what's unique to me about this project and what can really build, build a firm foundation for all the crises that these neighborhoods suffer each and every day, not just in a natural disaster. So I'd really like for you guys to consider supporting this. Thank you.
Maxine H. Davis, 2153 West Algonquin Trail, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71107. After the success of the ribbon cutting at Morning Star Baptist Church, we are now in the process of expanding over the river to Bossier City. North Louisiana Interstate have started meeting, setting up meetings with Bossier City officials and discussing having two community lighthouses in Bossier. One would be located at Stonewall Baptist Church, and the other one would be in the Barksdale Annex Community Renewal Friendship House. In the process of getting ready for the ribbon cutting at Morning Star, Ms. Small, who heads the Moore Town Community Garden, and I, we canvassed the Moore Town area, and we talked with the people to find out their needs, and we left door hinges. to find out their needs, and we left door hangers. There were several homes with handicap-accessible ramps and elderly people living in the homes. I spoke with the elderly man during the power outage. He was in his home without power for several days, without food or water. He was waiting on his friends or family to come check on him, where they were in the same situation. When we spoke with people and they heard about the job creations our efforts would be creating, they were very excited. We will be creating clean energy jobs and also giving job opportunities to the people. North Louisiana Interfaith want to work with the parish and at the neighborhood level. So, whenever situations like this happen, we will have a plan that will work for any situation, and that's why we are here today. We found out that there's a lot to be done, and we are striving to do that, to help people on both sides of the city. Thank you.
Thank you so much for taking your time to hear. I'm going to bring this up to you guys. This is a copy of the questionnaire that every single person that went into the outreach in the Moretown community, there were over 150 individuals that went to triage the area to speak to the people that were there to find out what issues they were encountering so that you can see exactly what those conversations may have looked like.
That's everything y'all wanted to say? Terrific. So, are there any commissioners? We went out of our way to make it possible to ask questions. Are there any commissioners who would like to ask questions of the members of this group? Commissioner Crackman said he wanted to make a motion. Does anyone want to ask a question and get a question answered? Do you mind if I go with questions first? Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I have concerns on, I'm just finding out about the fourth church location. This is brand-new to me, and I don't think I'm the only commissioner that wasn't aware of there's already plans for another location. So, I have, and I stated this on Monday, my concerns are what is this long-term plans for location? So, we now have three, possibly four, inside the inner city. It's still not meeting the needs, I don't know the right words, but out the whole community, that if we're going to do this for a third and a fourth, how is this proximity making sense? So, I think it's not meeting all the needs of the community as efficiently as it should, and now there's plans for up to 20? Is that what I'm hearing? Where are those funds coming from? And so, is this going to be an ask of Caddo Parish for more funds?
So, I think I could answer.
Please, yes, please respond.
So, I'm like, what is that plan?
Yes. So, I will try to take those in order. So, first, our organization has tried to be as strategic and thoughtful as possible to identify some of the most vulnerable areas and also the geographic areas in our community. So, I mean, just to be frank, our getting into the MLK Cooper Road neighborhood has been a top priority, and also the Allendale area. And so, I think across Caddo Parish, there is a need, and this is, I think, the proposal that we're able to bring to the table. And now, that being said, with the funding that has been allocated to Galilee and the Allendale area, you know, our, you know, I think what was originally on the table was just using those, the ARPA dollars that had already been kind of, you know, put towards Galilee and Allendale, and making sure that this could be a shovel-ready project by the end of the year. And there had been a commitment to say, well, if there's any extra funds that are available, when we get the rebates back, we, the ARPA committee had said, we want to make sure that goes to another similar project, right? So, that it is designated within the ARPA guidelines, that all of the funding that's being approved would go towards the same project. So, I hope what we are able to, what we have worked hard to be able to bring to the table today is to be able to say, if there is rollover funds, which we believe that there will be, we will find the resources, we will make sure and commit to making sure that the fourth site is absolutely built. And so, we have identified a site at MLK in the MLK neighborhood that has already been reviewed by experts. We know there's a need. We already know there's a team that's been allocating different parts of the neighborhood to do outreach. So, I hope that it is a value add to say, we know that there is already a project on the table, and if there's a little bit extra, we will, you know, we commit to doing two projects with the funding that had just been allocated towards one. I don't know if that, was there another part of your question?
20 sites? Are there going to be 20 sites?
So, I keep saying 20 sites, so then we're down to 16 or 17 more to be built. Where is that ask coming from, and has the city been involved in this ask?
So, this is, the dream would be that every neighborhood has a site that's in a 15-minute walk or a 15-minute drive. So, right now, this project had come about because there is $250 million in GRIP funds, GRIP or HERO, that the state has won for projects like this. And so, our initial goal, you know, a year and a half ago when we started these conversations, is that $250 million for projects like this might end up only going to places in South Louisiana that have capacity, and if we're not building our own plans. So, that is not our, really, we had committed last time to not come back to Caddo Parish for more funds, but this is a special, you know, ARPA situation. So, really, we're hoping to be able to leverage this progress to access state funds. So, does that answer that question?
Yeah. So, in short, I think she's trying to say that essentially, no, our goal is not to come back to you every time we need to build a lighthouse. Rather than that, these locations will help us bring in those funds that are reserved for projects like this, because they're seeing that it's being done, and they start to stand, and then it brings in the attention for those projects. Whereas us being here today, the situation with Galilee and the ARPA funds was like an open-door invitation to say, okay, if those funds cannot be utilized for the original project, then we can use them towards this. And the church had already expressed a desire to do that, which we would have been working on how to do that project. This just ended up being an opportunity to do so.
May I have a...
Sure, go ahead. You have the floor.
In New Orleans, this is where, this is where you're looking towards or looking at for the model.
We have built 15 of them in New Orleans.
There are 15 in New Orleans. And how many are you looking to put in Caddo Parish?
The goal in the big vision would be for every neighborhood throughout Caddo to eventually have one. That is the goal. That is the goal for community lighthouse in general. These functions...
Within a 15-minute...
Yes. These function best within being a 15-minute walk, because if someone has an outage situation and they're too far away from the lighthouse, what good does that do? Or a lighthouse team, it doesn't do them much good. An outage or four freeze, which we've experienced both significantly. And all of these sites will have wells for them to have free-flowing water.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all your questions?
I would like to address the part, President Young. I'd like to address the part about proximity. Where MLK 6 sits in Willa Shoot, 2644, and where I live, you're two miles from Blanchard. And then past Blanchard, you can keep going to Gilman, you can keep going all the way around till you get to Rhodesia. But we are pretty close to Blanchard. I go to the Walmart in Blanchard to get my medications, because it's like that. So, where Morning Star sits, you're close to Monk House Airport neighborhoods. You can come right back down Hollywood, and you're in Hollywood. You can easily cover that area all the way back to Caddo Heights. So, for proximity purposes, where Willa Shoot sits in the middle of MLK, you can serve people on North Market, right over by Deer Park, Brookshires, all of that area, and then come back around and go back up Blanchard and Royal Road and serve people in Blanchard. Those two, I do know.
Thank you.
I know Stonewall too, because I'm from Bossier.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Commissioner Blake, for your questions. The next person, Commissioner Atkins, do you have questions also?
I just have a, I'd like to make an observation.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Sure, go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. I think many of you all know where I stand on this. I think that the lighthouse mission is an honorable mission. I understand what they're trying to do. I respect that, and I have friends in Interfaith, and I always hate to vote against my friends, but in my, you all know that I've always felt like this is not the most cost-effective way to pursue this problem and to address this problem. I have concerns about the high level of concentration of spending in certain discreet areas. It just seems like a disproportionate allocation in my mind. And I'd like to remind commissioners that if the money is not spent on these lighthouse projects, it would roll into the broader parish-to-do list, things that have not yet been funded on our parish-to-do list. So, I just wanted to make my thoughts known on that issue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Cothran, did you have a question?
Yes, indeed, Mr. President.
Please ask.
Okay. First of all, I have several questions, of which Gray Sanax, some of it. My question would be 20, well, let me back up. Initially, we talked about doing two, okay? We talked about doing Highland, and we talked about doing Morning Star. And we said we were going to see how that worked out before we moved forward. But here we are today talking about one or two. I can't quite figure that out from the conversation as well. But the thing is, and I've been trying to understand this, and I've had several of my constituents ask me, because there are other than Protestants, I've had some Jews ask me, I've had some Muslims, I had some people in my, that are my constituents, that are in my district, that ask me, why a church? Okay? Why not a non-religious facility? The other thing is, who's next? I mean, you all have a, I guess you've got a plan or a playbook of some sort that we don't have. And the thing is, someone said it last week, you know, who's leading this project? You know, normally, when you lead a project, you already have the monies to do whatever it is that you're attempting to do when you're calling the plays. But in this particular case, you don't have the monies to call the plays. You're asking us for the monies, and we're just kind of like following behind you as we go. And the thing about it is that when I sit here before, I had no problem with trying to with two. I had no problem with that, because we all know some of the best things that have ever happened in the world was experimental. But, you know, before you really find out how it worked out, and I'm going to just hypothetically say you got 20, that maybe two of them worked out of the 20, look at the money that could have been utilized somewhere else within the parish. So, what I'm, I guess what I'm asking numerically, asking over and over, who pays for all this? That was a question a few minutes ago, and I still didn't get a solid answer, because again, you know, after the two last time, that was it. That's what we said. Around this horseshoe, two, and that was it. But here we, today, we're talking about two more, then I guess two more, and I guess two more. And, you know, I understand pressure, and yes, I am an elected official as well, and I represent my constituents. But the thing is, again, is that we have to stop this play, okay? We have to stop it at some point, because the thing is, again, either we're going to do 20, or we're going to do two. And the point being, again, if we agreed to two in the beginning, we need to stop right there, pump the brakes until we find out what's going on. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Cothran. I'll leave the floor with you while your question is answered, in case you want to respond. Would you like, would someone from the community lighthouse team like to answer Commissioner Cothran's question?
Two pallets.
Well, my, like, before they go, my understanding from these beginning discussions was that they had kind of concrete plans for two, they had tentative plans for two more, and they approached us with those plans. And so, that was a total of four experimental sites, and we already had ARPA money that we wanted to use for the first two. And the reason that this conversation is going on now is that the funding from ARPA that Commissioner Burrell asked to be allocated and was allocated by a previous commission to Galilee Baptist Church for a school project needs to be spent, but doesn't, but can't be spent on that school project, but it could be spent on a community lighthouse project. And my understanding of the religious question also is that the service organizations that help communities here, like, are basically all churches. So, if you want to couple this resource with somewhere that's going to spread it out into a community, it's probably just going to be a church de facto here. But I'll let them answer too, and then...
So...
And then I'll let your...
I'm just a representative of a member organization. So, I can speak to this, to a little bit of detail in terms of the information that I have. It might not be the full answer, but from my understanding, the Interfaith came seeking funds to do two houses here. And the funds are granted and much appreciated, and the projects are one in place, one in progress. And I think that they're going to be a great resource for the community. It's my understanding that there were allocated funds to a project that ended up not meeting, that was not the lighthouse, that ended up not meeting the criteria for the funding that was allocated. So, in looking at what does meet the funding, the opportunity arose to do a third lighthouse. And so, the money could all be spent in building a lighthouse. But if we do that, then it makes it to where we can't request the rebate money from the federal government for half of the project. So, we basically just waste $250,000 by not being able to access the rebate. So, by cutting the amount of the funding in half that was requested from the ARPA funds for Galilee, then we can complete that whole project. But now, we have $250,000 left over that also meet the ARPA guidelines. So, we thought, what a great way to shift the funding to a second lighthouse that meets the criteria that funds and operates in a whole different segment of the community, that can also then apply for another section of federal rebates. So, we get two lighthouses for the price of one, for money that's already allocated, that's not being asked for today from the commission. This is money that's already been allocated that doesn't have anything to do with a new request to try to expand the project that's already in place.
So, what you're telling me, and if I heard you correctly, had we spent the money on this education project with Galilee, we would not be dealing with this at this time?
Correct. Because, but that project did not meet the guidelines for the funding that was put in place.
Okay. And if I'm correct, on Monday, we were talking about $500,000, not $250 each.
Well, and that's what we're, that's what we were seeking, is if we could use the $250 for the allocated area, then we can balloon that to 500 by the additional federal funding that can be rebated to match that first funds. And what we're asking for is a written authorization to extend that, the extra $250 that we wouldn't spend initially to a secondary, to a second project.
Well, I say again, if you go back and look at the particular paperwork that we had on Monday, it said $500,000, then it said $250, and $250, it says straight $500,000, and that was it, which means that we would have had, we voted, were, if we were able to vote that particular day, we would have wasted $250,000 taxpayers' monies, because the thing is, again, like you say, you could not get any type of rebate or refund or anything of this nature, had we done what was asked of us in the beginning.
Well, at the original ARPA committee meeting was where the motion was made for the $500,000, however, any funds remaining to roll into the next lighthouse. So, that was discussed at the ARPA meeting. If you check your PowerPoint slides, it was the initial slide that was there that discussed the motion and that the motion...
Okay. At this point right now, I mean, great idea, I can't support it, but again, that's me. Thank you.
Also, I'm sorry, to answer your other question as far as religious organizations, the Highland Center is not a church. So, that's one of the locations, as well as one of the locations in Bossier would also not be a church. And these are brought up based off of opportunity and the capital of people as well, because it's nice to have a building, but you can't do anything with a building without people that actually care for the community, that want to be put into action to do something. So the need goes to where, the call to it goes to wherever the need is, and where people are ready to be mobilized. If that answers your question as far as those that you get from your community.
All right. Next, do you have a question, Commissioner Burrell?
I have a question, but I have an explanation.
Okay.
Oh, what I was gonna say is to try to clear up some of this misunderstanding that continues to, you know, whirl around the horseshoe. I was here, I was here along with Commissioner Gage Watts when this project first came up. They requested four locations, two of which we would do as a pilot. Those monies for the pilot was appropriated. And Galilee got in, got into the budget, because they submitted a project whenever the funds came, that was geared toward education. But the rules for ARPA kept changing. It was fluid. That's how actually the lighthouse project became eligible, because they put in mitigation as well as disaster recovery. Those are two things that were actually added, along with other things that were taken out. So that's how, that's how the lighthouse funds project became eligible for those funds. Galilee was allocated $500,000 initially. They put in a request, and it was approved, and the money was appropriated for Galilee. Given the fact that we have, they were already on this list of four that we were talking about upfront, along with Willow Shoe. Then, the $500,000 was geared toward Galilee. I don't think it would be fair to go back and tell Galilee to give theirs up, to give it to anybody else, since it was already allocated based upon a request that they had made or the application that they had made. So given the fact that these projects, we could get two out of one allocation, then I think it would just be only prudent to be able to do that, since they were already on the list. So that's where we are at this point. So all of, all of this other additional information convoluted the whole situation is something that is coming on afterwards. In the Long Range Planning Committee, where it was sent, it came out of that committee committing these $500,000. And it says the remaining funds, which would help qualify it for the rebate, would be, the remaining funds of the $500,000, because the project costs less than $500,000, would be rolled over. I gave, I stated that in the motion that we had last, in the work session. And it also says that the community lighthouse funding, the ARPA funds must be included with the backup water system, which the president had requested. In addition to that, that these funds also, the rebated funds will also be used in Caddo Parish. I don't know how, how much clearer that can be. That's, you know, that's kind of where we are. So this, these additional questions, I mean, there's nothing wrong with questioning, but I think all of those things have been answered, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Cothran, because this information was given, and actually, it's actually in a link on your, you know, on your agenda. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Okay, the next person on our list is Mr. Crackman, who wanted to make a motion. Commissioner Crackman.
More appropriately, Commissioner Thomas had already pushed this button to make a motion.
Oh, I see that, yeah. Okay, I have a motion also from Commissioner Thomas, but I don't know what it is.
I was gonna defer to the author, Commissioner Burrell.
Commissioner Burrell, do you want to make a motion?
What I'm gonna do, Mr. Chairman, is request to not vote on it at this, at this particular time and move it back to where it was.
You wish to postpone, postpone or send back to committee?
No, we're not going back to the committee. I think we've answered all the questions.
So postpone till the next regular session?
If we could just, well, Commissioner Jones, he wants to be here to vote on it, and he's had a problem early on. Said he's tried to get here and even, but I'll make a motion before we leave, if necessary, to move it to the next meeting.
Before we?
Before we shut down.
So, well, I think this would be the best time to make that motion.
Point of order, Mr. President?
Commissioner Thomas?
Are we able to just put this back in its regular order?
Well, we would have to vote to do that. Yeah, we can, we can, like, we can go back into regular order without voting on this.
Okay, can I make a motion at the point of order?
Yes, but we do have another item in our out-of-order thing, which is Kelsey Samuel's special recognition. So. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this until our next regular session. Okay. Any discussion? I can't hear you. You can, you can tell me. Okay. Commissioner Epperson, you're on the board for discussion?
We going back to regular order?
Not yet. I have, we have a motion and a second to postpone this item 20.1 until, two weeks from now. Okay, we can vote.
And Commissioners Blake, thank you. That motion carries with 11 in support, none in opposition, and one absent to postpone item 20.1 until the second meeting in November. So that will be on your next regular session.
Okay, now we have a very special resolution recognizing Yuri Drive Middle School student, Kelsey Samuel, daughter of our own Assistant Director of Animal Services, Kelvin Samuel.
Chairman, may I like to make an amendment to that motion that we would include the resolution relative to the indigenous?
Indigenous peoples.
People, right. They've been sitting here a long time.
Oh, great, sure. Let's, let's add that one, and we'll do that right after this one. Thank you.
Okay. Would it be appropriate if I go ahead and welcome the Samuels up to the podium?
Welcome, Kelsey and Kelvin.
And her dad joining.
Please stand for this special resolution reading.
Okay, this is a special resolution of recognition and appreciation for Yuri Drive Student of the Year, Kelsey Samuel. And it reads, whereas the Caddo Parish Commission is proud to recognize and celebrate outstanding achievements by young members of our community, and Kelsey Samuel has exemplified such excellence by being named Student of the Year at Yuri Drive Middle School. And whereas Kelsey Samuel, the daughter of Kelvin Samuel, Assistant Director of Animal Services at Caddo Parish, is an exceptional eighth-grade student who demonstrates not only academic excellence, but also the strength of character, leadership, and positive influence on her peers, as commended by her teachers and school administrators. And whereas Kelsey is known for her intellectual curiosity and strong work ethic, excelling in challenging subjects like algebra, where she earns high school credit, and bringing dedication and enthusiasm to her studies, as well as to her role as the Student Council President, a member of the Beta Club, and a volunteer in the school's library. And whereas Ms. Ashton Guin, Kelsey's algebra teacher, has praised her for extraordinary determination, curiosity, strong intellect, and her role as a peer role model, highlighting her kindness, respectfulness, and her positive approach to overcoming challenges. And whereas Ms. Jennifer Pace, Kelsey's English Language Arts teacher, has noted Kelsey's maturity, focus, and poise, especially in leadership settings such as the Student Council, where she not only represents her peers, but inspires them with her kindness, humility, and natural leadership. And whereas Kelsey's commitment to her academics, her involvement in school clubs, and her positive spirit have had a lasting impact on Yuri Drive Middle School, making her a deserving recipient of the Student of the Year title, and making her a role model for students across Caddo Parish. Now therefore be it resolved by the Caddo Parish Commission that it does, that it does hereby honor Kelsey Samuel for her distinguished leadership and tireless commitment to the betterment of her peers at Yuri Drive Middle School.
Congratulations, Kelsey. Congratulations, Director Samuel.
I would just like to say thank you so much for this amazing honor and opportunity. Being named Student of the Year is an incredible privilege, and I'm overly grateful for the people who have supported me through every step of the way. Thank you to my classmates, teammates, teachers, coaches, principal, counselors, and my family. I could not have achieved this without the love and support from all of you. This award means so much to me, and I plan to continue working diligently and make the most out of each opportunity. Thank you so much to the Commissioners of Caddo Parish for this recognition.
Commissioner Thomas?
I just wanted to say congratulations and want to encourage you, as you go into high school, to seek dual enrollment opportunities. I think it would be a great opportunity. You seem like a very bright young lady, and I think you could benefit from dual enrollment opportunities. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Atkins?
I want to congratulate you on your achievement. Keep working hard, and I'm sure you'll go a long way. We're proud of you, and you represent the parish very well, so thank you.
Commissioner Gage Watts?
Thank you so much. Congratulations, Kelsey.
Thank you.
We are super proud of you. You are doing an amazing job. We're just looking forward to all of the things that God has planned for your life. I want to recognize your parents and thank them for their commitment to making sure that you are shining bright as possible. This is not our first time giving you an honor like this, and normally that doesn't happen, right? So I see your principal here, who happens to be my classmate. Hi. Hi, Ms. Maria Edwards Preston. We're so glad that you're here to support this super student, and whatever we can do on our end to help you excel, we want you to know that we are here for you, because the youth are definitely our future here in Caddo Parish, to help us go from great to greater. Keep up the great work.
Commissioner Cothran?
First of all, congratulations. And as a father, and I'm looking at your dad right now, he is beaming. When you, when you leave here, get whatever you want. You got it right now. You got it. Okay, trust me, you got it. But the thing is, again, I would share with you as well that, you know, when I hear the math part, because I used to teach math as well, and that's one of the things I really love seeing young ladies do, because the thing is, I'm looking at the next engineers and things of this nature, as you continue to use those skills going forward. But the most, most of all, like I said, I look at you, I know your dad, and the thing about it is that you're doing well. Continue to do what you do and get what you want before you get home. Thank you.
Kelsey, I want to congratulate you again on behalf of everyone in Caddo Parish. When I was in the fifth grade, my best friend and I were both being considered for Student of the Year, and he got Student of the Year. And I was never considered for Student of the Year again. And middle school is even a bigger deal than elementary school, being Student of the Year, and you've done it more than once, so that's an amazing accomplishment, and I bet you can do it more times. So we'll be watching. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Oh, Commissioner Burrell?
Well, young lady, you just started something. By being where you are, you're setting the, you know, you're setting that bar up high. You'll be surprised at the other young people that will be looking at you and your accomplishments. And you have, I don't know, Maria, you're a principal, that's my church member back there. I know she's done a wonderful job where she is. And you just, just keep your, you know, keep your eyes on the prize. And before you know it, you'll be out and you'll be in college setting other paces. So just continue the good work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, our next item, which I hope by acclamation we can just throw into this out-of-order time, is 8.4 Special Resolution Recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day in Caddo Parish. Please stand.
Ms. Veronica Brown, would you please come forward?
As she makes her way forward, I'll read the record in, I'll read the resolution into the record, and this is a Special Resolution Recognizing and Observing Indigenous Peoples' Day of 2024. It reads, whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day is a time to honor and recognize the unique contributions, history, and cultural heritage of Native American tribes and indigenous peoples across the United States, including the first peoples of the land that is now Caddo Parish. And whereas Caddo Parish, named after the Caddo Nation, has a deep-rooted history tied to the presence, resilience, and culture of the Caddo people and other indigenous groups who lived on and cared for this land for generations before European settlers arrived. And whereas Recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day in Caddo Parish acknowledges the significant contributions of Native American tribes, promotes awareness of their history, and celebrates their influence on the rich cultural heritage of this region. And whereas this day also serves as a reminder of the injustices historically endured by indigenous peoples, highlighting the need for reconciliation, greater understanding, and respect for the sovereignty, rights, and cultural traditions of Native American communities. And whereas the Caddo Parish Commission is committed to fostering respect and appreciation for diversity, equity, and inclusion for our, within our community, encouraging all residents to honor the contributions of indigenous peoples and reflect on the importance of our shared history. Now therefore be it resolved that the Caddo Parish Commission does hereby proclaim Monday, October 14, 2024, as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Caddo Parish, Louisiana, and calls upon all citizens to join in recognizing, honoring, and celebrating the indigenous communities of our parish and their invaluable contributions to our society.
I have Ms. Veronica Brown. She's of the Choctaw Apache Tribe of Ebor. She will be accepting the proclamation today. And also, I would like to mention that in April of 2025, Veronica will be honored as the first Native American president of the Louisiana Municipal Clerks Association. And for those of you that may not know all of Caddo Parish's history, of course, we know that the Caddo Indians, this was land that they had, I think in the Treaty of 1835, they sold to the United States of America, this section. Thus, Caddo Parish came in 1838, naming this area Caddo Parish, Louisiana. And many of you know that I don't basically put a resolution or anything, a proclamation on unless I have experienced it, but I can truly say that our Native Americans stepped up to the plate during the height of the Vietnam War, which I had an opportunity to serve in to '65, '66, '67, and '68. They volunteered, they were drafted, and oftentimes when they went to places, they were not accepted everywhere. However, the African-American soldiers would let them come home with them for the holidays and also visit facilities within African-American neighborhoods. And even to this day, there are still atrocities, still atrocities on reservations, don't have clean water, good healthcare, mental institutions. So we owe, we owe them a lot, a lot of thanks for the thing that they have contributed to this nation and are continuing to do. Veronica?
Thank you. I would just like to say on behalf of the Choctaw Apache Tribe of Ebor, I don't want to get upset here, I appreciate you guys doing this, not only on behalf of our tribe, but for all the Native Americans in this parish and in Louisiana. Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica.
Commissioner Burrell?
Well, I was gonna ask her, when they gonna have the next powwow? They used to have them, and they used to have them out on Buncombe. I'm gonna ask when is the next powwow? We hadn't had one in this area in some time. I had a good friend who, they had bought some property out on Buncombe Road when I was, when I was a city councilor.
It was Twin Eagles.
Right, Twin Eagles.
But I can tell you that whenever we go to our clerks' associations, the conferences held were the presidents, where the presidencies have. So all the clerks in Louisiana are coming to April 2nd to Shreveport, and I am going to have a powwow. That's what everybody has asked. You know, we go to New Orleans, and they show us the band. You know, we go to New Orleans, and they show us the bands and all that from New Orleans, the heritage. And that's what these clerks, they have been asking me. We want a powwow. We've never been to a powwow. We see it on your Facebook. So April 2nd, there will be a powwow. I haven't gotten the exact location yet that we're going to do it, but I may be reaching out to Caddo Parish for some property usage for us to have a powwow.
You don't still have the property that's out there, that was out there.
It's still out there, but Twin Eagles, they disband. I think once their chief passed, I don't think anyone stepped up to the plate on that property.
Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Mr. Walker, will you run through your mind a good place where we could help host a powwow? And perhaps in exchange, we'll be invited. I've never been to one either.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Cothran, you're next.
Yes, I would just like to thank you for representing all the different tribes and different people that you represent at this particular time. Having read many, many books, in particular reading about the Buffalo Soldiers, I learned a lot about the indigenous people. And the thing is, I also found out how closely related African-Americans are to the Native American as well. Because the thing is, as a result, some of the military became chiefs in the Native American tribes. And the thing is, again, as you continue to read, as we often hear, we're not that much difference. We have more similarities than we do differences. So once again, I thank you for what you do and what you represent today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I've just, I think, Brother Burrell, I think we used to have Son of Six Killer used to be here too. So I guess he's deceased, but yeah, we're looking forward to that. Make sure you let us know well in advance.
I definitely will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gage Watts.
I just wanted to say publicly, congratulations, a well-deserved honor. And please take into consideration PBS Pitchback Park may be a great location. What you think about that, Director Wesley?
Yes, that'd be fun.
All right. Yes, so, and that's pretty close to Buncombe Road area. So we'll be looking forward to hearing from you and supporting this initiative.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, can we go back into regular order by acclamation?
Go move.
Okay. So now we're back in regular order.
Which brings us back to citizens.
And now we're in citizens' comments. We have one more citizen's comment today. It's from Mr. David Thompson. Welcome, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. The reason I'm here today, I came a couple of weeks ago to the parish commission meeting. I have two things that I'd like to bring up this time. First one, I have a home that's located just outside the city limits off of Cauckett Road. And I have been trying to get the home next door to me cleaned up, probably going on eight to 10 years. People that live there, they purchased the home, and I know it was a government subsidized loan because I talked to the guy. I knew him. I lived by him for a while. But after they paid 10 years, they're up and they're gone. Okay, so I'm left with a problem. Nobody has kept the property up. And I have called, I'm not throwing blame, but I've talked to Mr. Chuck Wilson several times to get the property cleaned up. Not throwing you under the bus, Mr. Lazarus, but I've talked to you. And the thing that I get is the property, you know, it's cleaned up. But I don't think any one of y'all would want to live next door to this home that I'm trying to sell. This is the home. This is it. Now...
Could you pass that around?
It takes longer for them to unload the mower and mow it than it does for them to load their mower back up. I'm just trying to get some direction, some way to help. Now, I've done some checking on it. Core logic, they pay the taxes, been paying the taxes on it. I've done everything I know to do. That home has caused me, my insurance to go up to where I'm paying more for it than I am the new house I just bought over here. You know, it's about $2,400 a year. And the thing about it is, don't ever make two claims within a couple of months. Because when you do, it gets where nobody wants to insure you. So I've dealt with that. I'm just looking for some direction. What can I do? Can the parish, I mean, is there any way? There's five foot on my property and his property that was deeded for, I'm assuming the parish to keep the ditch clean between us. All right? Now, I've called before.
Can we extend?
Move to extend for one minute.
Is that okay with everyone? Okay. Please continue for one minute.
I've tried to get that cleaned up, especially with the tree that caused the damage. Twice the limbs broke out, wound up. You know, I should have never claimed twice on my insurance, but I did. I called the number on the window, the people that supposedly take care of it. They told me they couldn't find anyone cheap enough to cut the tree down. So I dealt with it for another year or two. Finally, it fell. Luckily, it didn't, it fell in the ditch between us. So I got out there with a chainsaw, tried to cut up. My 20-inch saw blade would not go around it. But I cut it up, got my tractor, drug it all out of the ditch so water wouldn't back up on my property. But there's an issue with the water because nobody is cleaning up where the water can flow. I just need something done. Brother, it's a government property. Ever who owns the property, I mean, if that was my home, I know I'd be getting some citations. I'd be paying. But because somebody else owned it, somebody's covering for them. I can't get nothing done.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I will ask our administration to look into it.
Okay. I do have another issue if I could.
Well, your time is up. Can you do it quickly?
Yeah.
Okay, how about half a minute?
All right, the new home we bought, the floods came up from Cross Lake. We just bought the home. There's a water line connected to the pier. You can't see it. Come up, broke the water line. We didn't know we had a leak, you know, till the water goes down. So I got a thousand something dollar water bill next month, another 300 because it's split open. So I go to the Lakeview Water meeting, and I asked that they could reduce the bill. They said, no, it's against federal law. But Attorney General, and I have it right here, said that they can amend it. They can adjust that rate if it's due to a natural disaster such as flooding. But they chose not to do it. I paid the money. But I think about the people that live in that neighborhood. You know, a lot of them, tree limb fall, knock off their water spout. They don't make no adjustments. And I don't think it's fair. And, but there is a law, Attorney General, and I don't have time to read it, but I got it if you want to look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Commissioner, is Commissioner, could, Mr. Thompson, I think you gave all your information to our clerk. I'm going to ask our clerk to make sure that, I think, is it Commissioner Young who represents the area where his leak was? And he has been involved?
This is 5240 North Road.
No, that's my address.
Okay, what's the address of the property in question?
5588 Brett Wood Drive, R.E.T.
Talking about the water issue.
Yep.
That's the water, oh, the water issue, no, that's a Norfolk address.
Okay.
That's in Lakeview.
Great. So, Mr. Clerk, will you please get?
It's the water issue at the other house with the ditch just not cleaned up.
Yeah, you have two, you have two water issues. Mr. Clerk, will you please get that information to Commissioner Greg Young? He has been involved with that water board, we all know, so maybe he can help sort that out a little bit. And, Mr. Walker, will you have property standards go out to this other address? Make sure the ditch is clear and maybe put the property owner on just a continual visit from Mr. Wilson?
We're already addressing it now.
Thank you so much. Okay, that ends our public comments for today. Now we have visitors, but there are none, and so we have regular session minutes, 7.1. Commissioner Gage Watts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move to englovo the regular session minutes, the special session minutes, the special resolutions that we already presented and the ones that are to be presented with postponing the one for Mr. Cleveland White to our next regular session.
Okay, so all of Section 7, not 8.1, but the rest of Section 8, including, excluding 8.2, which we already voted on, and including 8.5, which is the resolution for Todd Hopkins.
Correct.
All right. Any discussion?
And that item 8.1 is to be postponed to the next regular session, you said?
Yes, for presentation.
We can vote?
So, I'm sorry, so that, just so I make sure that we have it correct at the record, it's to be adopted today but presented on the, at the next meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make that clear.
Okay, great.
And Commissioner Crack, and it looks like, there we go, thank you. And that motion carries with nine in support, none in opposition, and three absent.
Mr. Clerk, I would like to ask you, if, has the resolution for Todd been drafted already?
It has.
I would like to ask you to read that aloud into the record.
Absolutely, I'll be happy to.
And I'd like to ask everyone to stand. This is for our colleague from last term who has passed away.
Okay, this is a Special Resolution of Remembrance and Appreciation for Todd Hopkins, and it reads, "Whereas Todd A. Hopkins, a beloved and dedicated public servant, former commissioner, clerk of the Caddo Parish Commission, and longtime employee of the Parish of Caddo, passed away on November 5, 2024, leaving an enduring legacy of loyalty, kindness, and public service in Caddo Parish. And whereas Todd was born in Itzo, West Germany, in 1963, before moving to North Caddo Parish in 1965, where he resided for most of his life and formed deep ties within the community alongside his loving wife Karen G. Hopkins and their three children Rachel, Meredith, and Brandon, and seven cherished grandchildren. And whereas Todd's 30-plus years of dedicated service to the parish began in 1990 as a computer entry worker, and over the years, he advanced to sign shop supervisor, then director of Fleet Services, and the clerk of the Caddo Parish Commission, bringing exceptional dedication, integrity, wisdom, and a compassionate spirit to each position. And whereas Todd continued his family's legacy of public service as the son of Roy M. Hoppy Hopkins, a respected Caddo Parish police juror and commissioner, former mayor of Oil City, and longtime state representative, both men contributing immensely to the well-being and growth of Caddo Parish. And in addition to his roles with the parish, Todd served as mayor of Oil City as well from 1993 to 2004. He was also the co-owner of Bon Tom, a bar and grill on Caddo Lake, and actively engaged in numerous community organizations, including the North Caddo Medical Foundation Board, Christmas on Caddo Celebration Board, and the Oil City Rotary Club. And whereas Todd's contributions extended beyond his career as he shared his passions for hunting, cooking, and gardening with friends and family, becoming a master gardener and renowned for his culinary talents as a guest chef at the Double G Ranch in South Texas. And whereas Todd's presence, warmth, and unwavering commitment to his colleagues and community earned him admiration and love of many, including his close friend Commissioner Ed Lazarus and Assistant Clerk Michelle Nations, who worked closely with him during his many years of service. Whereas Todd Hopkins will be remembered as a role model for fathers and grandfathers, a loyal friend and a community servant who loved and celebrated his family, friends, and his parish, leaving an indelible mark on Caddo Parish and inspiring all who knew him to serve with the same dedication and joy. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Caddo Parish Commission does hereby honor the life, legacy, and service of Todd A. Hopkins, remembering him as a man of great integrity, wisdom, humor, and compassion, and extends its deepest condolences to his family, friends, and all whose lives he touched. And that's signed by all members of the Caddo Parish Commission."
Thank you all. In recognition and honor and memory of Commissioner Hopkins, earlier this week when I found out he had passed away, I asked them to fly our flag at half mast, which I believe they did, and I think he would have been pleased.
Okay. Mr. Jim, when is his services?
Do we know when Todd's funeral services will be?
Tentative, the 16th.
The 16th, but it's tentative.
And we certainly will share that when we hear,
Thank you.
you know, final confirmed arrangement.
Okay, thank you. All right, that brings us to communiquees and committee reports and the administration response. Mr. Walker, would you like to start us off?
Nothing further from the administration.
Okay. Are there any communiquees from commissioners? Commissioner Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to be sure to share with the citizens regarding Mr. Cortland Malloy. He's one of the citizens of District 3, very, very known figure with Booker T. Washington, one of the founding teachers of Booker T. Washington High School. Not only did Mr. Malloy turn 100 years old, which I think is, you know, definitely a blessing to live to see a full century here, but he was also recognized today on the Today Show for reaching, for becoming a centenarian. So I definitely want to make sure that the citizens told him a happy birthday. We also did share a proclamation that was previously adopted with his family. Once again, he is 100 years old, and we've had some pretty bad weather, so we didn't want him to come down. Not only that, I did want to say not only happy Thanksgiving to everyone, but, because I won't be here for Thanksgiving, so I'm just getting it out of the way. But I also wanted to share, if you don't want to share, everyone, can you tell everybody about your must-.
I'm going to do it in president's report.
Excuse me.
That's when I'm supposed to talk about stuff like that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Cothran, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to acknowledge on 5 November, I had the opportunity, along with one of the commissioner and at me as well, had the opportunity to attend a freshman delegation over at LSUS on 5 November. It was really enlightening as we went throughout the entire university over there. They're doing some really creative and very different things, and I saw some things that was going on there that reminded me of the Army as far as the research and things of this nature that's going on. In addition to that, I had the opportunity to attend this morning the 43rd Annual Shreveport Boja Mayor Prayer Breakfast. And the guest speaker was Coach Brian Dawson, who is the coach of centenary. It was a really good presentation this morning as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cothran. Commissioner Epperson.
Like to say happy birthday to the United States Marine Corps. On November the 10th, they will be 249 years old. This was brought into play by the Continental Congress in 1775. Also, I'd like to remind everyone that the 14th Annual Veterans Honor Ceremony will be held this Saturday, November the 9th, starting at 5:00 PM at the Shreveport Municipal Auditorium. We will, our guest speaker will be Captain Maryland, Medlin of the 355th Medical Special Services Committee out of United States Army Reserve out of Boja City, Louisiana. Also, the 14th Annual Veterans Parade will be held Sunday, November the 10th, starting at 2:00 PM at the Louisiana State Fairground. All military and veterans, free entrance to the fair. Parking is free this year. Our grand marshal for this year will be Mr. Sam Archie Maddox. He is 105 years old, a World War II veteran. So we're asking that you all come out and support our military and our veterans. I also would like to thank the commission staff for the press conference that was set up in the foyer on Friday, November the 1st. A lot of the stations, they have sister stations throughout the state of Louisiana, and we got a call that there will be two representatives from New Orleans that will come up and be my guests. They want to see, see how we run our honor ceremony and the parade. And don't forget also that Senator Cassidy recognized the efforts of the Veteran Celebration Committee. Committee for our military honor ceremony and our parade, as well as all the things that we do throughout the year, not only for those two days in the 118 Congress, the second session. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Epperson. Commissioner Crackman.
Yeah, thank you. I missed the mark on the Hopkins resolution. I wanted to say something, and I just, anyway, it passed me, but I just want to say, I didn't know Todd as well as probably most of you here. However, as opponents, we actually communicated a pretty great deal, texting back and forth and ribbing each other, and the differences between me and Todd were actually very few. And me being as arrogant as I can be, I said, you know what, I can knock on doors.
Say that again.
I can, I can knock on doors and outrun him. And it didn't exactly work that way. Because the next second I turned around, Todd's on a side-by-side knocking on freaking doors. And when you consider after COVID, the issues that he had, I think it's safe to say that Todd Hopkins is probably one of the toughest cookies I've ever met. Between knocking doors and public speaking and serving District 1 his entire adult life, I'm very, very, very proud to have known him. And we had a, we had an odd relationship where we just ribbed each other, even, I know, we bumped into each other in Oil City, knocking doors, both me and him. And he pulled up behind me on Ferry Lake Road, flashing his headlights, and so I pulled over, and he said, you know, it'd probably save us a lot of time and money if we just rode together. So that was the kind of relationship that me and Todd had during the campaign. It was excellent. Anyway, he will be missed. He was truly a servant to our community, his entire adult life. So he will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Crackman. Commissioner Cothran.
Yes, for the second time, Mr. President, I just wanted to acknowledge, you know, the thing is, again, we always hear, you're supposed to give a person their flowers while they yet live, but I think he's gone now. And I was gonna talk about Commissioner Epperson. The thing is, from the press conference to Sunday, you know, I look at all the time, the efforts, and things of this nature that he puts in to represent and recognize the veterans of Caddo Parish. And like I said, I look at the time, the efforts, and most of all, his tenacity, his attention to details. And the thing is, is that you don't find that that often, okay? Year after year after year after year. And the thing is, again, even though he might not be here, I just wanted to publicly thank him for what he does for me and area of the veteran in Caddo Parish. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cothran. Okay, that brings us to president's report. I will make a two-part president's report. First, I will say, I was informed this week, oh, well, he's still here. You just, Commissioner Epperson, Commissioner Cothran was just praising you to the skies for all your work supporting and honoring veterans here, and you were, I think, most appropriately, not in the room to blush.
Talk bad about me, huh?
You would have been blushing. So I was told on Wednesday that the tranquilizer guns that we use for animals, that this commission, or a previous commission wisely purchased for animal services, were deployed to subdue and return to its home peacefully an enormous emu bird, which nobody expected. And I was sent some pictures, and I hope that Mr. Samuel will send those pictures to our clerk so we can all get a look at them. It's a big bird, and he's, he was very grateful to all of us that he did not have to wrestle it to the ground, unsedated. And the second item that I would like to share with you is, I now have a mustache, and the mustache is in honor of Prostate Health Awareness Month, which is November, sometimes called Movember because mustache starts with M-O. And for our next regular session, two weeks from now, I would like to encourage everyone, and there's only a couple of us that don't have any facial hair, to either grow a mustache or have other facial hair, which we could count, or a third option, and it could just be for a picture, is to use one of the false mustaches that will be provided by our clerk of, our clerk, because he happened to have a bunch of them. I'm not sure why, but, you know, we all collect costumes. So I'll also make a speech about some of the facts relating to prostate health and how we should all be more aware of it than we are, and I hope that we'll all be able to smile and wear a false mustache together. Yeah, well, that's not, you're not the, you're not the only woman up here who said that, so that's surprising. Okay. All right, so the next item looks emptied, Item 11, Public Hearings.
No public hearings for zoning ordinances. We do have public hearings for regular ordinances.
Do you have something to say?
I did want to point out, to remind everyone, that on next Tuesday, the 12th, at 11:00, we have the special meeting with regard to the millage vote. Just to remind, attendance at 11:00 o'clock next Tuesday.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're past 11 to Section 12, Public Hearing on Ordinances. Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Would you like to read them, and then I'll open a single hearing?
We are at the public hearing for ordinances, and we do have a number. Would you like me to read them all, and you can open one public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. That's going to be a public hearing on Ordinance 6469 of 2024. That's an ordinance adopting the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Shreve Memorial Library for the year 2025. The next item is a public hearing for Ordinance 6470 of 2024. That's an ordinance to deem property surplus and to authorize the transfer of surplus property owned by the Parish of Caddo to the town of Greenwood and otherwise provide with respect thereto. The next item is a public hearing on Ordinance 6473 of 2024. That's an ordinance to donate surplus property under Chapter 19, Article 2, Division 3 of the Code of Ordinances, relative to donation of a duplicated property acquired by the Parish under Louisiana Revised Statutes 472236, to authorize the donation of property to Friends of Friends Incorporated and otherwise provide with respect thereto. Those properties are in Districts 3, 4, and 6. The next item is a public hearing for Ordinance 6474 of 2024. That's an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Riverboat Fund and the Oil and Gas Fund to provide an additional appropriation for the Safe Summer Program and otherwise provide with respect thereto. The next item is a public hearing for Ordinance 6475 of 2024. That is an ordinance declaring the intent of the parish under Louisiana Revised Statutes 472236, to acquire full ownership interest in six parcels of property identified by Caddo Parish Tax Assessor's Geographic Numbers 17140212738, 1814375510, 1814376843, 18143712224, 1714011582, and 171423541, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. Those properties are in Districts 3, 5, and 6. The next item is a public hearing, and this is the final item for today, is a public hearing for Ordinance 6476 of 2024. That is an ordinance declaring the intent of the parish under Louisiana Revised Statutes 472236, to acquire full ownership interest and parcels of property identified by Caddo Parish Tax Assessor's Geographic Number 18143512854, and described as Lot 54 and 1/2 adjacent of the abandoned alley and bosso annex, and otherwise provide with respect thereto in District 3. At this time, I would also just remind you briefly that you do have a number of items, two of which were mentioned by Mr. Walker a moment ago, that will be on a public hearing in a special meeting on November 12th. And then you have a number of other items that have been introduced but are not on for a public hearing today. They are on for a future public hearing that are your budget ordinances that are going to be available for public hearing at your next regular session. Also, you did advance an item for introduction that would typically be, you know, on your standard timetable would be at your next meeting, and that's 64, that's the, I'm sorry, it's up for introduction in a moment, 6477. I did, at this point in time, just want to remind you that that is not on for public hearing until December 5th.
All right. If you have anything to say about any of these ordinances that we are introducing now for public hearing, well, they're up for public hearing, please come forward. There could be for or against, public hearing is now open. Ms. Glover.
Yes, sir. John Glover, 9100, Walker Road, Apartment 217, Shreveport 71118. Public hearing on 6474, 2024. I stood before the body on Monday, asking for an explanation of this request. The information that was made available was not clear. You know, when you don't discuss these agenda items in detail, you leave me at a loss. I can't speak for others, but I can speak for myself. So if I ask to give me some kind of an explanation as to what these $50,000, this appropriation you're asking to have, what do they, what do they represent? I mean, are we not, or am I not worthy of finding out what those dollars are going to be utilized for if I come before you and ask the question? Because if you don't discuss it in your work session, oftentimes when we get to the regular session, you're just approving, and I'm still left at a loss. I still don't know what this may or may not be. So I don't know, my deal is, no for this.
Ms. Glover, may I ask you?
Sure.
When you tried to find out more information about this, who, who or what did you read or hear from?
Initially, I sent an email to the author of the legislation. Then I did not hear anything, so I bought, stood before the body on Monday and asked again about this legislation, and I had not heard anything. And then when I went back, because I did leave early, I went back to view the streaming live, and I didn't hear anything. So now that it's here for a public hearing, then I'd like to know, you know, if I missed it when I was listening to the streaming live, then I apologize for that. But I did try to make sure that I covered my bases without making an allegation that it's not intended to be an accusation, but just an explanation being sought.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My understanding of this item, and I'll also defer in a moment to the author of the item and our administration, but the Safe Summer Program is a, sort of like a summer day camp program that the parish runs, and sometimes in conjunction with the city through our Parks Department, and our Parks Director is coming up. Mr. West, would you like to describe the Safe Summer Program and maybe why we're giving it $50,000 more dollars?
Yes, and as he's coming, I just wanted to, if I may, Mr. President, just address that you did leave on Monday before I was able to address those things. But this goes beyond what Commissioner John Paul Young just spoke about. This program expands throughout the community during the year. So it's more than just summer initiatives. This is to support initiatives, awareness, education campaigns, keynote speakers. This is a violence prevention program that is well, as I may say, that it is well constructed, and it is intended to make sure that we're not just networking in our communities, but it's speaking to each one of our districts individually. So it has very unique capabilities. If you've never attended any of these events, I invite you to come out to the next ones. They do national night outs, carnivals at school, health fairs, it's for seniors, for youth, adults. It goes all throughout our community. So $50,000 is a small amount to actually attribute to what they are contributing on behalf of Caddo Parish. Even, they can actually customize an event for you if you would like for them to come out. So I'll let Director Wes continue this conversation.
Yes, thank you. As you, as you just explained, our crime prevention efforts are year-round, it's just not during the summer. And we use the Safe Summer Program, or year-round programming for crime prevention. For instance, on November 25th through January 6th, you'll have 30,000 Caddo Parish students out of school during that time. We gotta find programming for them while they're out. The Safe Summer Programming Funds allow us to program recreational, athletic, nature, outreach programs for over 30,000 to 50,000 Caddo Parish students, youth throughout Caddo Parish. And also, we, we program, we have, our program footprint is all over Caddo Parish. We program in five towns, five villages, city of Shreveport, Keithville, so our outreach is, is large. So $50,000 to, to program for 30-plus thousand students and youth and the communities is very minimal, and if we can't do anything else, we can program, and we can do that well. And these are, a lot of these programs are initiated from all of the constituents, all of the commission's constituents here, and we're working with the neighborhood associations and communities to provide these programs.
And I also want to add one thing that you didn't say, your partnerships with the law enforcement and healthcare professionals, those type of services that you are also providing in our communities.
Yes, we partner with the Caddo Parish Sheriff's Department, Juvenile Department, the DA's office, Project Celebration, YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, all of LSUS Centenary. We partner with a number of external organizations throughout the year to provide. So we are providing, we're bringing skin to the game as well as the community and some of our external organizations.
Sure, would you like to ask another question?
Not so much another question, but to reiterate, my intent was to get an explanation, which you've just shared with me. Had that information been given to me when I perused that legislation or the agenda, there would have not been a need for me to stand here before you and ask for the explanation. Not denouncing the efforts that you all are doing because I commend those, but when I don't know what you're doing, and I ask for what you're doing, and I don't get an explanation, then it brings me to here whereby I feel that as a citizen, then you need to explain to me what it is. And because this is on a public hearing, I am very appreciative that I actually have an opportunity to hear the explanation. Thank you.
You're more than welcome. And next time, just stick around when you have a question. I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, let's see, following up with that, Mr. Walker, I think you recall, we were trying to start collecting more data on outcomes for the kids who participate in these programs.
We've talked with our Parks Department about what we can do with that, and we're trying to see what we can do.
Great. Okay, public hearing is closed. Oh, Commissioner Cothran.
You know, as Ms., Ms. Glover was standing there, I was just thinking and looking at the title. If you just look at the title in and of itself, it's a, it probably needs to be renamed, because the thing is, again, it includes, it includes so many different things, because again, just looking at it, it's summer, you know, you think just summer and go from there, but like, as Commissioner Gage Watts and, and the Director just shared a few months ago, it covers a wealth of knowledge and things of this nature. So personally, I would recommend that we possibly look at renaming that particular fund if, if possible, and go from there, because again, it gives a, it could give a better, a clearer picture of what, what actually is going on.
I think, I think that's good advice, Commissioner Cothran, and I'm sure administration can do that without a vote from us. You could just call it the Safe Caddo Program.
Right.
That would be fine. All right. Now we're on 13 zoning ordinances, it's an empty section, 14 ordinances for final passage. Mr. Clerk, would you like to?
Ordinance 6469 is the first ordinance before you today, 14.1. That's an ordinance adopting the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Shreve Memorial Library for the year 2025.
Second, we have a motion from Commissioner Gage Watts, second by the Chair. Any discussion?
I think this is actually something that we pass annually for the Shreve Memorial Library. This is not inclusive to our budget, but it passes through the commission. If there's any additional information, I'll yield some finance to share with if anyone has any questions.
All right. Would you like to englovo anything with this?
Excuse me, Mr. President, I would just comment, I think.
Mr. Atkins.
Seems like I made this comment, thank you. Seems like I made this comment a couple of weeks ago when this came through, but they are spinning down their reserves to some degree, but they're, they have a big capital program in repairing all the fire and, and fire and associated flood damage. fire and, and fire and associated flood damage at the downtown facility. So I think that's a one-time thing, and they'll be back in schedule here soon. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Okay, we can vote.
Commissioner Burrell is out of the chamber. And that motion passes with nine in support, none in opposition, and three absent, bringing us now to ordinance 6470 of 2024. That's an ordinance to deem property surplus and authorize the transfer of surplus property owned by the parish of Caddo to the town of Greenwood and otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Have a motion from Commissioner Thomas, second from Commissioner Gage Watts. Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, I'd like to englovo and adopt ordinance number 6470, ordinance number 6473, ordinance 6474, ordinance 6475, and ordinance 6476.
All right.
Let's stop there. Okay.
Any discussion? Commissioner Cothran?
Yes, Mr. President, I, I just have a question in reference to 6473. If I remember correctly, donating this property, Friends of Friends, and I know, you know, we got all the Louisiana law and things of this nature, but if I remember correctly, it's like a five-year period that they have to actually do something with this property. Am I correct? Okay, and, and I'm just sitting here thinking to myself, five years, if somebody give me something, you know, and again, it's supposed to be built up on, and I think, you know, the particular task, buildings that they're going to do and agencies that they're going to put on there is phenomenal and great and needed, but the thing is, I just can't get past this five-year thing for me. I'm not against it, but the years.
Sure, sure, I, I understand. Five, you think five years is a long time.
It is.
Yeah, the, there, one of these, actually, two of these properties are in my district, and one of them is actually on my street, and it was demolished almost two years ago. And before that, it was a burnt-out house for eight years. So what's five years compared to that?
Well, I mean, it might not be anything to you, but I'm saying for me, you know, if I lived in the neighborhood or something of this nature, and, you know, you're giving something, if somebody give me something, I promise you, I'm gonna do something with it quicker than five years. And I know that's the maximum amount of time. They could get started as soon as they get it from us, but the thing is, again, five years, that's a bit much, and I don't know if we can or cannot do anything concerning the length of time per the law.
I don't know. Attorney Bernstein, do you have an answer for that question?
Sorry, would you, would you restate your question? I was talking to.
Could the five year, could the five years be somehow reduced for the time period that they have to use this property productively?
The, our response to that, Commissioner, is that we're trying to give the organizations the opportunity to do something with it. Additionally, to be perfectly candid, we don't want the property back, because then we have to take care of it. In other words, it becomes parish property at that point, and we would be responsible for it, just like any other owner. And so we're, the five years is sort of a, giving them enough time so that if they do have a stumble or two along the way, they've got the opportunity to get, get their project accomplished.
Okay, please understand, once again, if you give me something, and I tell you what I'm going to do with that particular property, I promise you, it'll be before five years that I will get it done.
Hmm.
That's all I'm saying. The thing is, again, I'm not against the process in and of itself, I'm just against the length of time.
Thank you. Attorney Bernstein, if, if the lot on my street isn't used for anything, if they don't build on it, if nothing happens there in five years, what happens to it then? Does it revert to parish ownership?
Yes. At which point, at which point, then we have to mow the grass, at which point, then we get sued if somebody trips and breaks a leg. That is the downside of this.
Okay. Well, and right now, like, my, my lot is in the city limits, the one, it's not mine, but on my block.
Yeah.
Or street.
But it's adjudicated.
It's adjudicated, who's mowing the grass now? The city.
Correct. Yeah, the city would be keeping.
So if we're the ones giving it away, then we would be mowing the grass after five years if they didn't use it.
And, and additionally responsible, if somebody breaks a leg, at this point, adjudicate a property, we are not responsible for it. We are, we only have, at this point, what's called a tax title. And by state law, we are not responsible for either the upkeep of the property or the liability associated with the property, once we go through this process. And that's why we get a signed agreement with these organizations, whether they're, whether we are donating it to them or whether we're selling it to them, we get a signed commitment from them that they will take it, or they forfeit the funds that they have given us, the deposit they have given us with regard to the, particularly on the sell side. They forfeit their deposit if they don't take the property because of the implications for the parish becoming the owner.
So, Mr. President, I guess my question would be, can I make a amended motion to pull out 6473, because everything else I have no problem with, but the thing is, again, 6473, I don't have a problem with it as proper, but I do have a problem with the time that's allocated to the organization.
Commissioner Thomas made this motion, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Thomas, would you like to leave that out?
Um.
So we can vote separately on it?
Sure.
All right. So now we're voting on.
Give us just one moment to make sure that that.
Okay, yeah, so now we're voting on.
That's documented correctly, that 6474.
Now we're voting on 14.2, 14.6, 14.7, and 14.8. Englovo and adopt. We can vote.
Okay, and that motion carries with nine in support, none in opposition, and then I believe that leaves us with ordinance 6474 of 2024.
Yes, so 64.
I'm sorry, it's not 6473. It's 6473, and for the record, that is what the, that is what the, the vote that you just took should have said except 6473. I believe it, I believe it was listed wrong on the, on the screen, but.
Okay, can you correct that on the record for us?
We will.
Okay. So now we have a motion from Commissioner Gage Watts, second by Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Gage Watts?
I'll use the Commissioner Thomas.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd like to make a motion to englovo and adopt ordinance number 6473, number 6475, and number, was 6476 included in this?
Oh, I think y'all.
We already, we already did every one in this section except for 14.5.
Yeah, we only took 6473 out.
Thank you.
So just adopt.
Does that make your motion to adopt, is it just to adopt 6473 now?
I'm englovo and then adopt in 6473 and 6475.
We've already adopted 6475.
75 was adopted in the previous motion.
Okay, never mind, because I thought you wanted both of them taken out, but go ahead.
I understand how you heard it, yeah, but, but it wasn't how it was made. So.
So the only one we voted on is 6473, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Commissioner Epperson.
Comment on 6473. How, how long has this policy been in place relative to this five years? It's not just what just happened, right?
Yes.
Okay, well, my, my, my suggestion would be that we go ahead, because it's been done like this in the past, but moving forward, that we were looking at deliberations that we could minimize, say, we can go for three years. But it's been done in the past with others, so I, I just don't think it'd be right to change in the midstream with these particular people here. But I think it would be good if we would adopt the policy in the near future to lower that amount of time.
I can live with that personally.
And Mr. President, I can't get on the board.
Commissioner Thomas?
And I also agree, also, once again, as you know, since we've been here, I have been reaching out for us to be able to look at reinvest Caddo and find different ways in which it can benefit. I'll also repeat for the record that the Friends of Friends Incorporated, as well as the other organization, I have spoken with them in District 3. I definitely agree, and many of our citizens agree with the information, with the things that they're trying to do. One of the astounding things about the owner of Friends of Friends is they have secured funding for the renovations and to be, develop these property from the bank, they're pretty much waiting on us for it. Go ahead.
And again, again, Mr. President, I, I can concur with Commissioner King there, because the thing is, again, yes, it would not be fair to stop these people in the middle of the stream, but going forward, we definitely need to look at something going forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Cothran. I would also like for us to look at our policy of giving these properties out in batches. I understand they're given out in batches of four, or we encourage people to take more than one at a time?
The, the ordinance dealing with the donation, rather than them coming in at one piece of property at a time and then having one ordinance at a time go through, we ask that they have four parcels that they, they request, the donation of four parcels or more. And most of the organizations that are doing something in the community are looking at something that would take, you know, more than one parcel. So that's why we're, that's why the four parcels is the minimum that's in the ordinance.
What if they don't want some of the parcels? Doesn't that increase the odds that they'll be left vacant more than five years and become a problem for us?
And I guess it's possible.
I only ask because this one's on my street.
Yeah.
So let's look at that number two. Okay.
And, and so from that standpoint, what we can start to looking at is drafting some amendments to the ordinance to, both with regard to those two issues and bringing that back, and, and I'm sure having a discussion in committee about it.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we can vote.
Okay, and that motion passes with nine in support, none in opposition, and three absent, and that brings us now to ordinances for introduction by title. We do have some zoning ordinances for introduction by title today, and those begin with ordinance 6505 of 2024. That's an ordinance to amend Volume 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Caddo as amended, the Caddo Parish Unified Development Code relative to dwelling manufactured home and the use matrix, with all their provisions included herein, and otherwise provide with respect thereto. The next item is the introduction of ordinance 6506 of 2024. That's an ordinance to amend Volume 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Caddo as amended, the Caddo Parish Unified Development Code by amending the zoning of parish, of property located in the northwest corner of Blanchard Far Road and Lucas Lane in Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from RA Rural Agricultural Zoning District to RAPUD Rural Agricultural Planned Unit Development Zoning District, and otherwise provide with respect thereto. That item is in District 1. The next item is an ordinance, is ordinance 6507 of 2024. That is an ordinance to amend Volume 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Caddo as amended, the Caddo Parish Unified Development Code by amending the zoning of property located on the northwest corner of Woolworth Road and Tanner Road in Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District to RA Rural Agricultural Zoning District, and otherwise provide with respect thereto. That particular item is in District 12. And those are the, that's the end of the zoning ordinances for introduction today. Now we will proceed to ordinances for introduction by title, the first one being ordinance 6477 of 2024. That's the ordinance to adopt Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 4 of the Parish Code, of the Parish Code of Ordinances relative to parish contracts, and to provide for the payment of a living wage by contractors within the parish, and otherwise provide with respect thereto. As previously mentioned, this public hearing is scheduled for December 5th. Ordinance 6508 of 2024 is an ordinance to accept streets in Simpson Acres, Unit Number 4, into the Parish of Caddo road system, and otherwise provide with respect thereto. And ordinance 6509 of 2024 is an ordinance to close and abandon the street dedication in the Happy Trails subdivision in Section 4, Township 14 North, Range 15 West in the Parish of Caddo, and otherwise provide with respect thereto. That item is in District 11. That brings us now to work session minutes, where your work session minutes are attached from your November 4th session.
Okay, motion by, motion by Commissioner Gage Watts, second by Commissioner Epperson to approve the work section minutes. And anything else?
The resolutions, any? Yes, I would like to move to englovo and adopt the work session minutes, the Resolution 72, Resolution 73, 74, 75, 76.
All right. Any discussion on that? We can vote.
I'm sorry, just for clarity, it's, the, the item is the work session minutes englovoed with all of.
Right, work session minutes and all of Section 18.
Correct.
Thank you. Commissioner Blake, thank you very much. That motion passes with nine in support, none in opposition, and three absent.
All right, we've already taken these two sections out of order. That brings us to Communicates and Committee Reports, second round. If you have something very important to say, you may get on the board.
Mr. President, I would just like to know, the family that's out here, are they waiting to speak, or they're just here visiting with us today? Yes.
Especially the two, two youngsters out there have been so patient.
Yes.
Well, we're honored to have you.
Absolutely, welcome.
Nice to see a new face.
Bring him up to the mic. Bring him up to the mic, man.
No, that's, that's in Visitor's Section, which is passed. Thank you, we hope we'll see you again. All right, Commissioner Epperson?
Just wanted to remind us, Operation Green Light, November the 4th through 11th, for the green light bulb out there, letting our veterans know, we appreciate their sacrifices, and we welcome them home. Thank you.
Do you have an extra bulb in there?
Uh, no.
Oh. Where, well, where'd you get it? Walmart?
Home Depot, Lowe's, Walmart.
Amazon.
And Amazon, Amazon get to you overnight, they say we're not gonna run out this year.
All right, great. Okay, do we have citizens' comments for the second round?
I don't believe I've received any.
Is there any motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.